Time being six thirty, call the Halifax Plant and Board into session. All members present except for Larry Belcher. On the agenda we have six thirty-five continuation of public hearing for special permit number nineteen oh one, one thirty-nine Hemlock Lane. And seven o'clock we have appointment Bob Mathers discussion for zoning changes.
Site plan review and special permit?
I'm sorry, the public hearing for site plan. And then we have, on the new business we have discussion for submitted on O'Reilly's Auto Pads. And then minutes and bills. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Do you have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
That's your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna make a motion to...
No, yeah, six thirty-five.
Pay a bill?
Let's pay some bills.
Yeah, because things are getting a little hairy so I've gotta be in public hearings here.
Okay, cool. I can make a motion to pay a plenty, uh, pay a bill for the Clinton Halifax Express regarding a public hearing notice meeting legal ad number one three, one zero three nine nine, the O'Reilly site plan review ad was on two fifteen nineteen, two twenty-two nineteen, and another eighty-four dollars.
Do you have a motion? Is it a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's only one?
Mm-hmm.
Can we do the ready minutes?
If you want, we can do January seventh.
I don't, I think one of them still I can't do.
Well, the other three here for January seventeenth, February seven is a little bit longer.
Do we have them in here?
They belong to, they're eight pages. What do you have in room here yet?
Let's see if you have one of them. I don't have a copy at all.
No, he's gonna mail.
Yeah? Where's the mail?
I think you got it.
You're confused 'cause I brought back another folder.
Sorry.
Can't do this one. I read them though, the PDF.
Yeah, you weren't there. Huh? You weren't on that one, no?
No, I can't, no. Can't make a motion, I can't.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. Members present Gordon Andrews, Mark Malias, Carlos Scolti.
All right, but motion is a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, time being six thirty-five, I have a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion to open, to, motion to continue the public hearing nineteen SPR zero one for one thirty-nine Hemlock Lane mudfest.
Motion is a second?
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Is everybody here for the same public hearing?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've had, had a couple minutes to take a look over it and it seems like everything we were looking for is on there. It also looks like you were able to meet that hundred-foot setback in that corner. Also had a chance to read the...
The recommendation.
Recommendation, yeah, from five prominent police, they both seemed satisfied with it.
The key thing with that fire, you know, a little like thirty-five foot access, blah, 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 is that all they have, right? Just have a reassurance, it's just a temporary, there's no permanent structures in your way. It's all scope, that's when you pop a couple things, you can get anywhere, you gotta go, you know?
Yeah.
That's what they put in that news.
So was this plan just prepared as of today?
Yep, plan was, I picked it up in the day before yesterday.
So has this been sent out to all the boards?
I, um, I presented, um, I had a small copy for myself. And that's what I presented to fire and police, so I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't think anybody else got a copy of it, that's all I was looking up. And, uh...
I do have copies, yes.
Okay. The only thing that I would say is that, you know, basically all we had was like a napkin drawn before. We need to get this out to the boards and they can at least take a look at it, see what we're looking at. So I would say that we probably wouldn't vote tonight. That we'll, uh, we'll ask for an extension because of, you know, late time getting this in. And that way that'll give the time for the, any of the boards to come up with a comment, okay? But we'll definitely have discussion on this and see if we can move this forward. Is there anybody in the public that's here for this?
Just to request for the courts to know.
Yeah. I was just asking if anybody else was here for this mudfest hearing, okay?
Yes.
All right, um, so open for discussion.
Do you wanna hear comment from the participants or you wanna go first?
Yeah.
Oh, I was just, I was kinda concerned due to timeframe with the kind of law stuff going on in Boston. We were kind of pulled and making a mute decision, a prior decision of, um, like just being agricultural. So it was kind of time sensitive with who with us to be in the constitution of the agreement that we had. Like should be no law with clear laws and so on and so forth, all were pulled down. It's a little time sensitive, I don't know what the next...
Our next... Our next meeting would be March seventh. And that would give the other boards and everyone enough time to take a look at this. And all the information that we were looking for, I believe, is there, so I don't see any issue.
Right here. Excellent.
We need to get some more chairs.
Have to move to a bigger room.
I think we did.
Yeah, I don't see anything.
You want chairs?
No.
Anything that we asked for is on here.
In the little kitchen anyway, if you wanna grab one.
Everything that we asked to provide all falls within what we're saying.
Yeah.
One of the main things, one of the main things too was the police and, uh, police and fire and they both, they both had no... One thing that does need to be read into the meeting though, I was seeing that we did get comments from Highway. Highway says, um, Highway sent this note saying that the Highway surveyor Steve Hayward wants Hemlock Lane to be completely swept after each event. I don't know if that was something that was...
It was mentioned before.
Mentioned before or I...
Yeah, but it was hard to detect what Nazarell brings down with his tractors and what's ours. And, um, you know, God, it's been very kind to us, it usually rains a couple days after the event and the road's too clear.
Mud goes away.
It's hard to decipher, but if that's a...
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if the Highway surveyor is talking about maybe like if they're, if they're concerned about the mud being trailed onto the dirt road or trash, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Like that could be anything. Yeah, that could be anything. It wasn't detailed. Yeah, the, the comment wasn't really...
Because the buses are running up there and it's dirt and you're trying to decide which is which.
Oh, this one.
And I think the comment was also that if the town needs to sweep it, they would do it and they would send you a bill for it.
Oh, right. I'll do it with my best effort, I can go up there. I have a portable power wash, I'll power wash the thing if I have to.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as it's a matter of... You'd be well to, if you can, if you can tell that there's extra mud getting trapped on there.
You know, if you really wanna get technical and really start chasing dirt around, it's something that goes into a combo of bombs and... They love me, they keep on trumping it and they lose all the muds.
I think it was more of a concern with all the mud trucks coming out of the pits and coming down the road.
Absolutely. And I, I was always hoping that, you know, maybe we can make a cleaning station prior to that.
Yeah, that's not that big a deal.
Seems like the larger vehicles get trailed in majority of them.
The younger kids, they drive them in, ride them out if they can get them out of there, if they don't break anything.
It's not much different than, um, you know, the, the corn bees when people are parking on the park on the property and see the muddy over there and they're driving out and it's about the same thing. The people in the street rooms, I guess, won't sweep from the heavy stuff up.
So I wasn't at the last meeting, but did the issue of the noise get discussed at the last meeting?
No.
Have you seen any of the letters submitted that are requesting for information on how you're gonna comply with any sort of noise levels generated from the project?
I am not, I know there was a, we have no amplified music after six, you know? And I guess the law is nine o'clock at night and actually I'm not amplified music to a sound decibel.
The special permitting, the creaming authority actually sets any regulations on noise, that's not actually planning board. Was that in the zoning decision? Uh, it's in the zoning filings. Special permit was granted already by the CBA, right?
Right. Yeah, we don't, um, every single permit for this to me was no amplified music. We turn on the music at nine in the morning, this should be the only shut off by five.
Well, before six.
Okay, so they didn't identify any of those, so. So that's one thing that wasn't in the decision, it looks like, in terms of any sort of a threshold for maximum noise generated by the site? Did you guys ever talk about that?
Absolutely not, my lawyers never mentioned anything. Usually that was done by the board, it was selected. Without bringing up on their presentation.
I only ask because there was a letter that was submitted, uh, from a resident on Paradise Lane asking about your compliance with, is that you? I don't know, maybe it makes sense that you articulate what it is that you're looking for here.
Do you want me to just talk about the noise, the piece?
Well, it's open for discussion, so if you have any, anything that you wanna add to this, this is...
If it's convenient, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
I think the...
All yours.
Okay, um, my name is Steven Brown, Paradise Lane, I grew up here and then left a long time and then came back afterwards. And I have a couple concerns that I wanna address. The first thing is that I think it's important when anyone requests a variance that the proposal that is set forth is complete, accurate, and gives all the detail that is necessary so everybody has a chance to review it and talk about it. So that's the first point I wanna make. I don't like having people sort of give a blank, asking for a blank check because I don't think it's appropriate. The second thing, one of the things that's on the, um, actual list of things to do, one thing that's not covered is dealing with noise. And that is one thing I think that we need to look at and consider. Especially since Mass DEP basically states that anything that increases sound level from a new use over ten decibels above ambient conditions is not allowed. Or if in fact that they have to be mitigated, if in fact that noise is there. So if you are proposing a land use that goes over that threshold, then either they have got to mitigate it or it can't be, can't occur.
I don't wanna interrupt you, but if you want me to address that issue, this is an operating farm, so as far as the increase of sound...
What we're talking about is what's happening at the mudfest.
Yes.
So what I'm addressing is mudfest, the farm has no problem, it doesn't generate any... It may have some...
No, what I'm saying is the, the standard that you're referring to is, says that it's an increase over the normal operating farm. Whereas the normal operating is a farm that's, it's tough to put a threshold on that, it's a loud operating...
But if you measure what the mudfest, if you actually, no, it's not very difficult to figure out there's a difference between what's operating in the farm and what the mudfest is. All you need to do is go like on Paradise Lane, it sounds like it's a Daytona five hundred going on here. And that's a much different use ends up going on in terms of the farm operation in and itself. And if you look at the regulations, and I brought a copy with me, and you can view them today. My sense is that would apply to the situation. And so that if you basically approve an, a action occurring on the land that basically goes beyond those thresholds, either they have to mitigate it or they've got to stop it. Or you've got to find a way in which that law, regulation I'm stating about, it doesn't cover it.
Um, when I looked at it, I don't see how that applies to a special permitting outdoor event. I think that when I read the state law, I didn't, I didn't make a connection to that. So I don't think that that applies to a special event. It's a, it's a one-time event as far as the noise and...
It's only one-time event, it's gonna happen several times. The thing is, once you approve it, it may be even more than so.
Only allowed two a year.
But that's, but that often happens is that once you get the footprint, the whole thing...
This is a legality...
All right, but we don't have discussion back and forth.
Okay, I just wanna make that point, but I would wanna make sure that you check the legal counsel whether in fact my point is accurate or not. And I will yield to what they state. My sense is it does, it will need to be addressed, and also that it is something that needs to move forward. So that's one of the things. The other thing is that, knowing that, if that land, when I looked at the site plan, it looks like there's gonna be significant alteration of that land to accommodate this use.
Have you, have you seen a copy of this?
I have seen the one that was online, I haven't seen the newest one.
Okay, 'cause this has more detail on it.
Okay. The only thing I was, the point I wanted to make is that if this, now is this gonna be land gonna be used for agriculture after these events?
It always is. Yes.
Okay.
It returns. Uh, nothing, there's no actual permanent changes or alterations.
Well, there's, I mean, I saw that there are Jersey barriers being brought in, that there's a changes in terms of something to stabilize...
But those are all non-permanent.
But are they removed?
Yes.
Okay, is a stipulation...
As needed, it's as needed for the farm.
But is, are they removed after the event?
Off-site, I, I don't know that...
Or someplace far enough so that that land is gonna continue...
Yeah, yeah, so I, I, I'm sure the, the property owner wouldn't allow them to stay in a way that would hinder his...
I guess my point is that would be fine, I just want to make sure that the stipulation in this occurs that any structures that occur on there are cleared away after the event so that farming, agriculture can occur. Because the problem is if you don't do that, what's gonna happen because it's over five acre piece is made trip. The NEPA requirement, threshold requirements and environmental notification have to be filed. But as long as it's bring back, back to agriculture, I don't think it's a problem.
Yeah, yeah, that's always been intended. And the NEPA filing, you only have to file if you need a state permit as well, so if you don't need a state permit...
Also if you're taking the land off agriculture. But if it's going back to agriculture, I think it's not...
Yes, sir.
But if it's gonna be on agriculture...
Yeah, there'll be no zoning changes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure of that. The other piece that also we're probably related is that when you start to clear land and you have a quick, with all likelihood, you're gonna have to have a NEPA, NIPD's storm water permit. Which is not a big deal, but it is something that when you do clear land and you clear grass that you will need to get one from EPA. It's not a big issue, but it is something, again, a threshold that needs to be looked at and make sure it, the conditions are met. The purpose of that act is basically to ensure that any water either for storm, that the soil is stabilized and the soil does not go off-site. But like anytime I work on a big project, you usually have to get one of those permits. It's not a big deal, but it's one of those things that you, when you're looking at what needs to be done, that has to be covered.
Yeah, one of the things that we provided is a, we're over a hundred feet, so we have a, a large buffer between any property. A hundred feet adequate for anything.
Well, when I've had to work on those permits, they obviously, they do look where the wetlands are on the earth is. But it's just one of those things you need to put in place to have that. It's not a big deal, uh, but basically whenever you clear land and strip it...
Uh, there will be no, this, this is actually...
It's all...
Yeah, they're actually not clearing anything to, to, to make this happen.
To be perfectly honest, they, it is a working farm, so if, if there's working tractors going on there, I'm sure Nazarell must have some sort of permit in place if that's the case, if that's what you're stating.
Well, no, that's a different situation, it's when you're basically, if you're basically, for example, you're trying to, uh, on the size of, you're clearing the area for the mud pit to occur, you're clearing areas for basically for trucks to move in. Maybe you do not need it, I'm just stating that one of the things that I'm concerned about is that basically when we go forward on anything with the town, that certain venerable standards and state standards are met and fulfilled and the people who are carrying them out do meet them.
Oh, certainly, um, I, I strongly believe in this, um, there won't be that sort of impact. I, I think part of the reason that they go for this is probably because it's the naturally occurring...
Yeah, but I'm not talking about just the impact, I'm just talking about the legal requirements for the NIPD's permit.
I think we could ask you to ask Webby whether or not this activity would require the construction general permit for the, the NIPD's permit. I, I don't think it does.
My lawyer, my lawyers, they never mention it because we don't, nothing's permanent.
Yep.
You know, they're now...
But we can put that, we can have the, just confirm that it doesn't need to be done. And if it does...
So what do I do now?
Well, it can be just a part of the condition that you, you have to meet that, you have to show that...
If you do need to file the permit, then you just have to do it.
Oh, I don't know, I don't know how we even go about that.
Your engineer would be able to do that for you.
Yeah, Joe should be able to. I mean, it's not a very complicated permit, a very deep permit, I can give you my notes here if that'd be able to help you. Well, I, I do look right up at that, like, um, like when we do the mudfest, it naturally formed in so many aspects right there. And you're in the prior year, about underneath of an acre of land. And if we went above and beyond an acre of land, we're gonna have to pursue a certain permitting thing. And the way we measured them, we measured larger than they are due to growth, and we were still under an acre of land. And I remember crossing that bridge...
Father, yeah.
Six years ago.
Yeah, so that, that's probably something that you've already cleared through, just need, need to make a...
From, Webby moved that?
Yeah, he should be able to...
So what am I asking him exactly? NIPD?
No, this is...
No, this is a NIPD's permit?
Or NIPD's.
So it's like EPA.
Hold on, hold on, too many talking at once, let's...
The architectural engineer will be aware of this.
Yes.
There's no doubt about that.
Yes, it's a EPA notice of intent for the NIPD's permit.
So he's gonna do what?
No.
Just confirm with Webby engineer whether or not he believes he needs a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit from EPA.
National Pollutant Discharge.
It's a NIPD's permit, N-P-D-E-S.
Okay.
And you know, if you're less than an acre of disturbance and it's temporary, then you probably don't need it. But I think that could be a general condition that you get any and all required state...
Two thousand and thirteen we had to cross that bridge at one point and, um, like I said, we measured, you're over-measuring because, you know, we had a row and all that, and we were still underneath the name farm, right?
Yeah, so it's probably fine, I think you just need to check it to make sure it still applies.
Those measures, that's what actually on my, um, draw I did myself. And the, the two other points that I made in my remarks to you, one is to ensure that there are either plans or someone there to deal with potential spills of oil or whatever, and that they are properly cleaned up. It's more of a contingency plan to oppose the regulation. But oftentimes if you have a machine and people fill up, if they do fill up there, I don't know if they do or not, but that should be something that should be...
Bring their own...
Yeah, and then just make a stipulation to other races, be like, fill up your gas, fill up your truck beforehand, just make it a stipulation.
That's what I wanna make sure.
I don't think you wanna get in that game of bringing gas down to the field.
Gas trucks pulling up, you know, any fuel containment systems there at all.
So you have no filling on site?
No, absolutely not.
Do you wanna copy this?
I suppose.
He's got some of the information on what he's talking about.
And the only other thing is, is that after the event is that there's proper de-watering of the site to make sure that the site is restored and meets typical kind of stormwater drainage guidelines when you restore the site. So those are the main things.
Everything's just returned to normal when you're done, right?
Basically, yeah.
That was one of the beauties of this, was the low impact on, on the site.
I'm sure Nazarell wouldn't want his farm back in worse shape than when he left it in.
Yep. And I think as it relates to the noise issue, I think the zoning board has some discretion in terms of what they allow for these individual events in terms of the hours of the operation as it relates to the noise generator from them.
They may, but I'm just citing state law.
It's not something I'm a part of, you know, obviously. Or the gun range for the police, I'm sure the decibel, I'm sure the decibel, I can hear that a lot more than I can hear anything happening at the farm is the gun range, so I'm sure that exceeds the decibel level as well.
We have more people in the hallway that are part of the hearing?
Not this one.
Not this one, okay. I just wanna make sure if anybody had any comments, if they have the opportunity.
So do we need to confirm with legal whether or not this particular...
I would say so.
Code applies, okay?
Do you want me to go to legal, that's what you just said?
Yeah. Did you get an opportunity to take a look at the new plan?
Uh, no, I just saw the one that was online.
Anybody wants to take a look at here? Keep anybody from seeing what we're talking about.
Did you say you had the, uh, the specific code, the three-ten CME seven-ten with you?
Yeah. It was not the full, the summary.
So anybody else has anything to add?
I just don't know how different it would be if the fireworks goes up a decibel. We have that a couple times a year, and that's happened.
That's actually louder.
It's my understanding that's under the special permit.
Yeah.
But I understand the the concern about the noise, but I I think the main thing that that's different on this is the temporary aspect of it is, I understand that you'd probably still be able to hear it or you could ever be a house, but I I I think it falls under the, you know, the the special permit, the limited time. And and also when, the the type of event, it's gonna be kinda Saturday, probably early afternoon, I assume to.
It's Sunday, it's Sunday, nine to five usually, music and noise are done by three because everything breaks.
Isn't there Halifax noise ordinance posted as well?
I I'm not aware of any.
On the permit, they tell me, don't amplify music down. Now, I know my neighborhood, they have parties around and people will try to come in before nine o'clock and the police, so like they crank that music up until nine o'clock.
Mark, you said there's no noise ordinance?
Yeah, but I know.
I didn't think there was.
The only one I know of, even in Plum County, is actually on Water Street, that's the only.
Noise ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah, you file it, you have to file it with the police department, not like, it's not with the town, no. This town, no, that one. But if they're only doing it one day a year up until a certain point.
Fire it to me coming back, do I have to get that Webby thing?
Yeah, I I.
I just gotta confirm.
Yep, and then.
What is my timeframe on that, a day, two days prior to the meeting, or?
I don't know if there's anything formally to submit.
Probably separately is possible.
Should I just have him email it to you all?
Yep, that's right.
If he finds something, just email it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll have something on paper that.
Yeah, if he says in his opinion, if the NEPDES permit doesn't apply or NEPA doesn't apply, I think that's only, it's just his opinion on whether or not it's applicable.
Maybe possibly if you don't have the dictation.
I have my physical measurements that I I physically walked it and you could you could do the math and figure it out, you know, it was one seventy-five, one twenty-five, and that's including all the pits, which I didn't have to do, I could have did them individually.
Yep.
And so when you do the math.
Yeah, that would keep down the square footage.
Yeah. Cause we we crossed that bridge in two thousand thirteen about that.
Yep. Yeah, I think if we can satisfy that and give the other boards a time just to take a look at the new plan, I I don't see any changes that need to be made towards here. Next meeting would be March seventh.
Does there any other discussion?
Is there, I I, I'm sorry, Gordon, is there somebody that he can contact with the verbiage of that permit that he needs just in case?
You can just send an email to Terry, right?
Well.
We should probably do it.
Just in on your behalf.
Oh, okay.
If you need any more information based on that special permit, please hit the clock, Terry.
Yeah, just send an email to Terry to show.
Yeah, I will have Webby email that, and now.
Yeah. It's, like I said, it's all, I don't know if you're aware of the situation, but it's all in court, some someone is who blew up in that. We're all under agreement after the official acid, move bullet, and red dust and all that. Supposed to have a parrot and decision.
Yep. All right, what we will need is a um, a mutual agreement to continue the hearing, so that we can get to the March seventh meeting.
Yeah.
March seventh meeting. We need you to sign on for that agreement and then we'll sign it. Probably if we get a thirty day, that would give us time to have the meeting and get the decision to the town clerk.
Basically, you gotta sign it because we can't act on it now, so if you can just like grant us the extension, so that way.
To the seventh?
Yeah.
Oh, I grant it to you guys, you need to sign something.
I just.
And that helps me, you know, why wouldn't I sign it? What name am I today, what's?
X.
I've already got dated.
Yeah, I don't know who I am today. Who am I, a petitioner? Been a rough four months, you know, bad car racing, I don't know if my brains came back yet.
Then I I need a motion for us to sign a mutual extension. Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we.
For thirty days.
Sign a thirty day extension for the public hearing for permit nineteen dash SPR oh one from Mudfest. Second.
I have a motion and seconded, all okay?
All right. Hi.
Hi.
And that's it?
So so what we're gonna do is we're going to suspend the hearing and open it up on March seventh.
That's uh, applied to the seventh you'll get from Webby.
Yes, you're gonna, you're gonna contact Webby, he'll send information to me.
And I'm asking, what is that, did you write it down for me? Thank you. Hopefully that's it.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, it's just been a. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Could we do a motion to continue? We just made a motion to extend, so a motion to continue the public hearing, then oh, three open.
Motion to continue the public hearing, give me a second. Too much stuff. Do you have a time for that? Do you have, can I have the, do you have the agenda real quick? Motion to continue the public hearing for Mudfest and petition nineteen SPR oh one, one thirty-nine Hemlock Lane to March seventh at six thirty-five P M.
Okay, we have a motion, there's a second.
Second.
All okay, bud?
All right.
Okay, run a little bit beyond his blog makeup?
Yeah.
You're up.
All right, so basically, we're looking for an overlay for the industrial zone. To try to basically expand the zone to to inquire the miracle, the marijuana despens where he's going uptown. Now, with the with the um, with the daycare up there, dancing school, it pretty much eliminates all of the industrial zone up there. So we're looking for an overlay and how that's created and how I can do it to try to get it up near Morgan's. Now, I know we have to go in front of the the signatures for the town meeting and stuff like that, but how would you guys suggest that I go about that? Would an overlay be the best way?
No, it's tied to how the marijuana is allowed, right?
It's gotta be industrial.
We tried to change that, we couldn't get it to change.
Yeah.
But you wanna increase the zone, but it's not industrial.
We wanna, we wanna bring the industrial back, so it's in the commercial area. Okay, it's commercial business, and that brings you all the way up to where Morgan's is right now.
Do we have a map?
Because I thought commercial ran down one of six.
Basically, I'll tell you how it sets up. Okay, right now, and here's your industrial right here. So we're looking to prevent an overlay, just to go right over here, instead of what we tried last time to try to change the zoning and everything.
Yep.
We wanna just do an overlay, and that's why I'm here to find out how we create the overlay, how do we do it? And what you guys would recommend for us.
And overlay or changing the actual zoning?
I'm pretty sure it's an overlay, they did it for the cell towers, I believe.
It's a separate zone.
Is that a separate one? How would you guys recommend we do that then? What would be the best practice for it?
I think you have to change the zoning from residential to industrial.
Yeah, I think you'd have to petition town, town meeting and everything, they'd have to vote on it.
To just to get to this one section for the overlay?
Yeah.
The town meeting.
Yeah, I don't see any other way.
There's no way to go down that.
But that, I would assume that would even have an even greater chance than the last thing, which I thought that had a good chance.
I think so, I think so too, yeah.
I was surprised if that didn't go.
Yeah, I think so too, so that's probably the best way we should do it.
Sorry.
Especially for where you're talking, it's not a bad idea for the town to increase the industrial area.
The whole industrial is on that side of town right now, is basically, it's 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 dead, there's nothing you can do down there.
I'm just, I mean, especially thinking that things like the recycling center, that those technically aren't, that must be, or is really close.
Honestly, we had a deal last year with the with the landlord for this property, and we did think it was industrial zone. We went and saw Charlie and had it all drawn up and everything, and it was right outside the zone. So we don't wanna go down toward the top, we just wanna be in this basic area over here, so that's why I came to you guys to try to figure out the best practice of how we should probably do it.
Well, it's only allowed in the industrial zone.
That's it, and this, with the daycare.
Is there another chunk off of one oh five, though?
I believe it's on, um, on one oh five is on River Street.
Yeah.
They're having a problem right now, though, with um, parking and everything else, I don't think that's gonna go, I don't think it's gonna happen.
That was with four.
But that that is industrial zone, right?
But uh.
Goes Wood Street too.
Yeah.
We'll buy that computer as also.
Okay, the computer as, I think it's owned by one private party up there, though, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think you'd have to make a proposal for a change. I think as long as you kept it, I think it's Laurel Street, right? Right there.
Certain big Laurel.
Yeah.
You think that'd be the best plan, like I, like last time, do it like that?
Yeah, especially if you held some some sort of distance off of one oh six to kinda set it, set that to some restriction, you know what I mean, set the new zone to straddle one oh six for a few hundred feet on either side. That way it wouldn't affect you know, any other roads. I don't, I mean, France doesn't even come back that far or anything.
So there wasn't a single spot in that industrial zone that got the distance setbacks?
Nothing, nothing, nothing worked. Across the street, dead. We were working with the guys across the street actually that owns all the storage units over there.
Yep.
Unless they rezone the entire place and divided it up. Everything comes in five hundred feet from across the street from the daycare zone, so anywhere in the industrial zone is gone, there's nothing up there. And um.
You try and buy an old, do you?
Daycare.
Yeah, Plan C, Plan C.
We have the dancing school too.
Plan C, but there's two of them up there, so um. So that's the issue, I mean, I I don't, you don't wanna bang on somebody's stolen access by building, but.
Donald says it every day.
I know.
Don, Donald says it every day.
I know, listen, I've talked to them too, so they have a building inside there, but we don't wanna be up that way. So as far as um, what do you think my my best approach would be to be up to this?
You'd have to go for for zoning change.
Okay.
As long as the zoning change is connected to the other, then it's not spot zoning.
Right.
You know, then you're gonna have to.
So how should I write that up?
You have to get signatures, right?
I get the signatures, by March, by March first, right?
To get a, um, yeah.
By the one.
March first, to get on the mark. Um, you might wanna contact um, an engineer, so they can give you where you want it, cause I know that when they did the other one, when they put algers onto the um, from residential to commercial, I think you needed like your longitude and latitudes and stuff like that.
Really? That much, huh?
Right, you need to know which parcels are included.
Addresses or whatever.
And we pretty much have the parcel all set, as long as we can just get the zoning correct for it.
Yeah, but we're saying this is in order to prepare something to get the town to pass it, it's a serious amount of engineering work. It's gonna go into it, it's not gonna be just verbiage and a hey, I like the. Yeah, that's gonna be an issue.
But I think I know something to help me up with that, so.
But is the best way I should probably do it then?
I see Charlie.
That's the only way I think.
It's the only way you can do it.
Okay.
Is for a zoning change.
Yeah.
Cause like Gordon said, you can't do spot zoning for just one parcel.
All right.
But I mean, the idea of extending that into that area isn't a bad idea, that's just the half of the town.
You don't live there.
It's a residential neighborhood.
He wants the blue building. It's not, it's not a parcel, he wants the blue building.
We overlook the blue building.
Are you guys in the back of that over there?
Yeah.
We have that.
Yeah, well, you said there was no residences.
It also says in the bylaws, you can't be where the kids gather, not not including schools and day camps.
There is room in that industrial park.
But it's gotta, it's gotta, it's gotta be written up as that, though.
It's five hundred.
The industrial park is still open at five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet.
All undeveloped.
Not in favor of it.
So which industrial park are we talking about, the one that has W S and Liddell, you're back there?
Yes.
Both sides.
Both sides.
This even commercial size will probably be sold for sale.
The thing is, he doesn't wanna build a building, he wants that blue building in a neighborhood. Show him the picture from this gentleman's.
Is that the new one that recently got constructed, that building?
The townspeople already voted to keep it industrial, he's running side skirt.
You also have to remember, that's not just industrial, that's industrial adult. So now you're moving that down into a family neighborhood.
And.
You need to tell the truth.
Oh, no, I, listen, I know not everybody's gonna support it, I I understand.
And you did not tell the truth. Can we maybe talk one at a time?
It's gonna be industrial as well, it's gonna take, well, those businesses fail or whatever, what's gonna happen next?
Well, that's what I'm saying, um, I think it's worth looking at, what's the impact of that on the town, like as far as, we already know the amount of industrial in the town isn't that great, it's probably inadequate.
There's four other areas.
Four other. But there's nothing in there.
Yeah, there's. So I mean, we gotta look at that as, does that impact, how that impacts the town, that's that's our view on it also.
We just got a lot of a meeting with Mudfest, that that it's a farm town, it's not an industrial town.
And you guys have the master plan, they even speak to them all the years, saying you shouldn't be doing the commercial business and adding to it, down the strip like that.
Be down to your house next, Gordon.
Anything else, we can't really.
So the townspeople vote to keep it a certain way, you just go side skirt, you just go and zone it and change it?
No, but I think if anybody.
It's gonna go to town meeting.
For the town, this is the place to do it. If someone wants to make a change to the town, this is where they come. We we weren't open door for anybody, if you wanted to make it smaller, I would extend the same gratitude to you guys. You know?
He stood, he went in front of the selectmen and said, there's buffer, no houses nearby, that's in front of a driveway, that's from another house, that's from another yard, looking at it, no buffer.
Was that in your driveway, did you walk across the street? So it looks like. Where you took that picture, I was at today.
So now.
That's the driveway.
That's the building that's next to Morgan's?
We're up there, yes.
That's next to Morgan's?
No. The sign. This is. Yeah, no, this is the driveway.
They're behind the blue building.
We're up there today, I saw that picture, everyone else they took a thing.
But you said there was a.
Not everybody's gonna agree, I understand that, I'm not looking to cause any problems to any of you folks, honestly. I live in town, so I'm not looking to cause any.
You can also not have it near kids.
Yeah. That's what we're working on, that's why we're here, that's, we're not looking to start any trouble on you folks, I'm sure you guys are great folks.
I hear you.
I've been in this town since nineteen ninety-five, no problem, any, and I'm sure not everybody's gonna agree with this. It's just, it's.
No, but it's that you're not seeing the facts, there's still half of the place that's unbuilt, that industrial park.
Well, we're saying it's all. At the time, we need you welcome to come and present that, I mean, it's honestly, guys, in another decade, it's gonna be like having the castles, it's gonna be, they're gonna be everywhere, they're gonna be everywhere.
Maybe none this time.
I mean, that's how you guys feel, I I respect your decisions, uh, listen, I'm not here to cause any problem to you folks, you're fine folks. We're just gonna do out there, and that's all.
But you need to be truthful with the facts.
If, if something I said wrong, I I apologize.
You did it at the selectman's meeting.
I don't reflect it.
And you did it here.
What did I say?
And that probably means you're gonna get up and do it at town meeting.
What did he say, I wasn't sure?
Did I say it accurately?
Yeah, but as far as, I mean. Yeah, I mean, as far as we're concerned, the way I'm looking at it, we have someone who's proposing a change, we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at it just as if anybody came in here and said the same thing.
And we need to know the real facts of what he's actually asking for, cause it seems like there's some ambiguity on what exactly the question is and what the ask is, so.
That's why I'm saying we're not gonna go off of a word, we're we're asking for an engineer to take a look at this and propose something, if, you know, that's.
But if he was making sneakers, it'd be different. He's not.
Yeah, if someone came in and said that they were making sneakers, we'd say the same thing, okay, get an engineer and propose and give us something and show us.
Clientele is gonna be coming in, we don't want.
You know the town voted in favor of it, right?
And they also voted to keep it industrial, which they are.
No, no, that wasn't a vote, I was there, no, you're mixing things up, but anyways, I'm not.
All right, well, where we're at here tonight was, you came in to ask what the process was, that is the process.
Okay.
And there would have to be a public hearing prior to the town meeting, and everybody can voice their opinion on that.
The town meetings, two thirds vote, correct?
For zoning change, correct.
But the townspeople decide, not. Right, there's.
Yeah, that's not us.
No, we just, we we have to hold the hearing, but. No, we just, we we have to hold the hearing part, but, but we do make a recommendation on it. And that's, that's how it works.
Okay. Thank you guys for your time. I'll see Charlie tomorrow and get it drawn up. Alright, thank you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Guys, honestly, I don't wanna fuck around with town, right?
Final of the squad.
Alright, thanks guys. We'll work on it.
One question. You guys said you'd make a recommendation on it, but when he was standing up there, it sounded like you had been working with him last time they tried to do this?
Uh, no, the last, I don't, I don't lark with him at all.
Okay.
There's no connection between me and him.
There was a statement.
But um, the last time, there was a different proposal was to um.
Make it allowable in business.
Yes, that that was the different, that was the other thing. That he had proposed.
We made a recommendation after the hearing, based on what the input is.
And that particular thing got voted down at town meeting.
Yeah, I did as well. Well, it doesn't, doesn't mean that somebody can't bring something before.
I understand you can bring it before you, but.
And that building right now is in the commercial district or is in the industrial?
It's in business.
Right next to Morgan's, the blue building.
So what's the section? So Circuit leaves one oh six and then Laurel comes, and then what's the section that used to go to BF five?
That's Laurel.
That's Laurel also, okay. Alright, so that, so that means you guys are up on the hill above the blue building.
I'm up on the hill above the blue building. I overlooked his mercury vapor lights at night now.
From building to building, multiple houses.
A light shining up on you?
Yeah, she went.
Yeah, we can see the glow.
Oh, yeah, it's hot.
Is it glow or is it shining up on you?
It's not shining in the, well, I have to look out the bathroom window.
That's from the uh, it's lights up all the ads and.
Because it can be deflectors put on the lights.
Yeah, maybe I brought, yeah. He put one deflector on the light over here, but none of the ones that face the offices.
Well, but I mean, if you make a complaint to us, that's something that we can.
Do we have your names and stuff signed in?
Yep.
Yeah.
So is your impression that he's trying to change his name for that building?
Yes.
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 I think.
That's not what I took from what I'm saying.
Suit him and take that building.
Yeah, that's, that's enough. That's.
My understanding was he was trying to get the zoning behind the WS buildings and all those to get changed to industrial.
Isn't that building still?
It's the blue building.
It's too close to the daycare still, right? That blue building? I feel like it's still too close. To the daycare.
From setbacks from all the things he needs to get setbacks from.
No, I think it just needs his space requirements that he needs to.
Yeah, just grow square footage.
But I don't know that it needs any setback requirements or anything like that.
You wanna know what kinda?
There's the edge of the road in daycare.
I'm talking like from the entrance though.
You still have all this redevelopment still in industrial.
Between that and the river.
How far do you think it is then?
I'll bet it's.
Cause the zone goes by Laurel Street, so you still have all this here, it's industrial on this side of the road.
This might be on the uh. Isn't it a diagonal line now?
Yeah, but I mean, but when you figure it down the road.
Yeah, you got a Spencer. Like the range. I just started with the road, it was always all like closer than.
Then there's the building for the town.
Should be able to. I don't, if you could get the setbacks and you're in the right district. Yep.
There's already a clear place there, there's all.
Is there industrial on fifty-eight or some one oh, one oh five, right?
Fifty-eight, dope. Down at the, down at the bars.
Hits.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Someone's already cleared like a whole, has it for sale right now?
That's actually uplifted.
No, no, it's a hall effect, dope.
So that was another statement saying that's the only place that you can't go, so.
Well, I mean, it's, it's pretty low underwater down there. And the stuff on River Street is, is not really buildable. I mean, when we picked the industrial spots, we picked kind of the crappiest areas, but.
I understand a lot, you don't want it.
Well, no, I don't think that's.
To a point.
When, when people think about industrial, they say, okay, stick it to the outside of the town.
Yeah, they think sm- smoke stacks.
You think a hell of a thing, what is this gonna say to you, Mike?
Yeah.
Gordon knows.
Brings a lot of points, health effects shooting the district's ring centralized, not having these broken up on one six.
Well. The reason it's that way is because one oh six used to wind through town.
Yep.
Then they straightened it out. You know, we don't really have enough business zone in town. You think about it, I mean, you know, we don't have business to offset the residential.
Well, listen, there's a reason that we put the industrial places.
How nice, natural buffer there, waiting to see it, and now we're still bringing it right into the, yeah.
It was nice when it was stellar.
But I, I think like I was saying, like, at first glance, pulling the industrial down where it's already connected.
Stella couldn't stay there forever.
Yeah, take a look at it, you know.
She was a character. She was a character. I never dared eat there.
No?
No, I didn't dare.
Hey, it was good. You used to smell the bread and everything. That's wheat.
Oh, no, that, I remember she had the, like, the rice and the salt to keep it from sticking or something. I would go to my grandfather all the time. And I remember the first time, I remember being like, oh, and I'm like, oh man, I get some of that thing. I, I, I couldn't stand it. And you were bringing me in there like all the time.
She was a character.
Just one other question. Was on the bylaw, the law, that can't be within five hundred feet where children gather?
Yeah.
Hey, the, the way it's spelled out, it sounds like you could just be kids all the time at the grocery store. And that's what five hundred feet are in the neighborhoods. There's no buffer, kids are looking right at the building.
Well, I'm not so sure about that. I mean, that, that's for legal determination, you know?
Is there school or childcare or just where children gather?
As like a youth.
It doesn't have somebody.
No, that's the.
There's gotta be a spot over there, five hundred feet away from there.
There it is.
And that's why it was picked for the industrial zone, because it's typically they're further away from the residential properties and.
The very back of the cul-de-sac for that.
Yeah, but that's all.
Sorry, I got sorry at your meeting, but I knew he was not telling the truth. I'm sorry.
Well, he wasn't at the selectmen's.
I think that's why he's got to put forward a real map of exactly what he's trying to propose and then we can all talk about the same thing.
Okay. Good, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll be seeing you again, Gordon.
Do you guys want to send a letter to Mr. Mead about this building? I'll read this one building down the building.
Yeah, yeah, pause along.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want me to send a letter to him with a complaint?
Probably not.
The lights are shining into the residential houses or?
Yeah, I mean, they really come up and make that complaint, that's all.
The guy here on the end came to me the other day and.
Oh, he did? Yeah, I mean, yeah, we can do that. Cause they should have deflectors on them so they're not shining up there.
Is that what our lighting ordinance says? They need to be downward facing?
Yeah.
Does it actually say that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does, after doing the Dunkin' Donuts sign, yep, it definitely does.
Like, can't shine on top of property.
Uh, is anyone interested in doing those other meeting minutes or do you need more time to read them?
Oh, you need time after that. Let's probably get him in there.
Is this uh, wait, do we got? Is O'Reilly coming in today?
They're not coming in. What it is, is it has been submitted.
I have an official copy.
We will be doing a public hearing for the site plan review.
Okay.
Um, but usually with these new buildings, commercial buildings, um, depending on the scope of it, uh, we would send it out for a third party review.
Let's do that.
For a review engineer, so I thought we would get going on that.
Did they say what size building they were doing or anything?
It is seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five square feet.
Who's the engineer?
That's key. Just under seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, but we're fifteen thousand.
Wow, what's a seventy-five hundred?
It used to be five thousand.
For what?
It's new special permit.
Either way, they're gonna need release for parking. Is that not a special permit?
Through zoning board with his. They are asking for four waivers.
Have they actually told us what waivers they're asking for?
Well, they, they told me because there was a little note on the plan that said you need to be more specific, so.
So they're not putting uh, the quadruplets in there, huh?
What?
What?
The, remember?
The condos?
Yeah.
That's how good.
Yeah. Well, it's still possible then.
No, this is the parcel right next to Mutual Bank.
Yeah, no, I thought that was.
Converland's possible.
Oh, that's Converland, farms part?
Is it, isn't that an Israel's property?
No.
No, cause what's uh, the, the folks there in town, they subdivided that land. Yeah, the PEXs.
Yeah, the PEXs owns.
That's not a PEX property?
Convo Times owns that.
Which PEX sold.
So that parcel wasn't part of the subdivision that we did? I thought it was, cause it was directly opposite the Stoppage entrance.
Right here.
Yeah. Was this not part of the PEX parcel and then subdivided out to create it?
No.
That one already existed?
I think he has this one too, though.
He has these.
Yeah. So like that other lot was.
But we did do a Form A on that, didn't we? I don't, cause he had to mess with the radius on that thing because it was like two hundredths short of the length required to get his.
I'm not sure if they gave it.
Cause they're infamous for their uh.
There was a light up.
That's not gonna happen.
Alright, it was a little bit of a, yeah, for now, that never used to be.
No. We don't, they won't even allow it for Dunkin' Donuts, no, no.
Yeah, they're infamous for their, their uh internally lit signs.
It would be nice to have this in and have it fixed out here.
That would be nice, actually. No shared driveways.
Here, I'll cut out one more exit.
But they were gonna put a light there, weren't they, anyways?
Yeah, there is one there.
Oh yeah, but I mean a light facing.
The curb cuts are already there for this piece.
Yeah, I know, it's just, it's kind of allows it to settle.
Maybe only do like an in for that curb cut and then the out.
Third part of your view is for.
Yeah, where's the light for this one? This, is that the light, the mast barn? Yeah, okay, yeah, so that just where the other entrance is gonna be. So these guys are off that intersection.
Yeah, but not.
And like heading west, taking a left into that's gonna be terrible. Mm-hmm. But I imagine that could be it.
It's twice. It'd be nice to come out this way.
That's just a swamp on water.
It's the trouble when you get one piece at a time.
Mm-hmm.
Cause the same thing happened on the other side of the street with Walmart, you know, stop and shop. Cause if they came in together, we could have had them.
Connect.
Had connector. So people could have traveled behind the lights.
They're gonna go to conservation too, it looks like.
Oh, yeah, so you're just banging right.
Someone's simply coming in the exit like they did the other day.
Oh geez. So they haven't done the official.
They have submitted, they have submitted a site plan. I received all the fees today.
Okay.
Um, I do have a letter um, of waiver requests. Three of them would have to go to zoning anyway. I've sent them the special permit applications. They are going to be asking for a variance and or whatever special permit for internally lit.
Are they uh, throw wrong much so?
For the site plan review?
Yeah.
Uh, I think so.
They're not getting, nah, I was gonna say, aren't they just not allowed? I thought we weren't allowed to give guarantees for internally lit signs.
We're not.
Nobody is.
But they're, when I get, that will come after the site plan. I've gotta do the, once they do an application for the variance special permit, sign, then it'll be a separate public hearing for the sign itself.
But if they can't technically get one, can we even accept an application for something like that?
Do the same thing that Dunkin' Donuts said.
We can always accept an application and let them plead their case.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we need to make sure that we find that right angle in there, right?
Okay.
Cause we all said that maybe the angle for Dunkin' Donuts was maybe a little too high for there.
Well, it's, it's seventy point eighty-two with the street and seventy-one there, so.
It's only a foot?
No, it's not even.
Oh, how many? Less than a foot. Oh, seventy point eighty-two, okay.
They're coming out proof.
Yeah, it's like, oh, five percent, that's not that bad. Cause it was twenty feet between the contours at one foot spacing, so that's less than five percent. Yeah, that's not that bad.
That's twenty?
Right, cause these spaces are twenty feet long from here to here. So from there to there is about twenty-ish. Alright, for ballparking?
Yeah. Yep.
This is all ditched though, yeah, cause this all slumps down off mutual banks.
Valley came down in like ground.
It's gonna be just weird.
Five feet of rubble.
Yeah, because he was using a plan from fourteen twenty-seven and he just handwrote some notes on it.
That's a tough area. Do you get, decide who to send? Who's the review engineer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who we wanna use?
I don't know if we have any um. We probably should send out for some requests.
Some bids or?
Well, we've got Nero, we've got Emery, we've got Self Engineering and.
Have we got any recent pricing?
They haven't changed in the last year when I went up and asked for the pricing, so.
How do we do this? We have people propose and say, I think it'll take me this many hours to do it, or do we just say this is what the budget is?
Well, basically what happens.
What we've done is just given it to them and they've done the review, but I, I really think that what we need to do is have them take a look at it and give us an estimate of what they think it's gonna be.
We also have, the petitioner has to give us an initial deposit for that review internet.
Right.
I have received fifteen hundred dollars for it so far.
Right. But we've no, sent it out with the cap on it, which I, I think it really, uh, we ought to have them come in and give us a, an estimate of what they think it's gonna be.
Just sort of like sending them off to an engineer, yeah.
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 You have to use that guy.
Before where the engineer's done the work and the review engineer's was more than the engineer's work.
Yeah, cause you go back and forth, you gotta write memos, you gotta review it, you gotta check their work.
That could be.
If in, all the information's not there.
Get a landscape plan too?
Yeah.
What?
Add in some green engine though, greenery. Aren't those gonna be dangling over the?
Doesn't say what the percentage of green is, is it?
They showed on the zoning page on the site plan, they had some compliance tables on that on the first page. I think that's mostly where all setbacks.
One of those directories.
It's saying the stormwater report, right?
It's a huge report.
Cause this is going to come from the. Cause this is gonna come out next, we're gonna have to look at five standard, standard like that. I like that they actually included an aerial map, you can actually see where it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you have a jingle, you can afford aerial maps.
Oh, oh, oh.
Thirty four instead of seventy three.
Not this week.
That is pretty nice, though.
That seems ridiculous, that we need seventy five parking.
That's why when the guy came in, I'm like, show me another, O'Reilly is about the same size, the type of flow and.
Yeah.
So he's at nine point two percent.
They're not even asking for lot covered spots either.
That, I think that's building lot.
That's the building, or not the pavement.
What's our requirement for that?
If you're, I think it's, um, if you have forty percent green space, you can reduce.
You're gonna reduce, but he wasn't even gonna be close with that number either. Do you know exactly what waivers he's asking for?
I can go get them in a few moments.
Yeah? Like to know?
He has no fire lane and the fire truck won't fit.
What's that?
The fire truck is not gonna be big, it's not gonna be big enough for the fire truck to turn around in there.
We have small ones.
You don't have fires.
That's what, hey, that's what he's been looking at lately, when we send, when we send these things to, to the, the chief over there.
Uh, I'd have to say that whenever I look at him, I think of the same thing, like, we need to show that a truck in an emergency could get up and get to the site. Cause you really have to pull out of there at top speed, like, as far as that goes, like.
Hell, no.
Like, as hard as you're like, oh, I can't turn around that, like, well, that's kind of the point to get in there quick, like. That's a little worse than I thought he was gonna come up with. Why, less than half of those are small?
Well, just nine by eighteen instead of ten by twenty, that's a pretty normal size, I think.
Well, they, they do a lot of, um, autopilot, the electric cars, but.
Ah, smaller?
Smart cars.
Yeah, but think of the cars that are in Halifax, though, lifted trucks.
I've seen a couple of the electric ones.
A lot of SUVs.
Lot of Teslas here?
We go a couple of those little smart cars, too.
What's the majority here, lifted trucks, big SUVs, Jeeps.
Full-size trucks.
Full-size.
What is this section about the gaslit tubes?
That's his way around the internally lit.
But what does that mean, that's like the neon, like, open signs?
Yeah, we have them in there on the gas.
But then it says you can't have it directly exposed to view, so what's the point of a sign if nobody can see it?
Yeah, they can't be exposed.
Well, he's basically intended, the gas filled tubes are inside and you can't see them, then they can have an internally lit sign.
Saying you couldn't see the tubes.
Yeah, may not be wrong, but.
Look at all the words, that's, that's what I got out of that.
But if you can't see them, then they don't really do any good.
Even, that does make sense, even for the neon open signs, right? So you can have it.
Yeah, like you have a, a, a big circle and it's open, that's gas filled neon sign.
Yeah. But here it says you can't have it at any place where anybody can see it.
We, we want business, but we don't want it to expand.
Yeah, I said we put out a bid then for.
Alright, so do you want me to send emails to him, he's gonna take a quick look and.
Merrill was the last time.
Who, who's doing all these things, is Webby and, uh, is the other guy?
I don't know if Webby does these.
Webby's not doing these.
No, I mean, like, who does the reviews?
So.
Sort of, and Merrill associates in over, um.
Lightning hasn't done it in a while, I did that yesterday.
He hasn't done anything, um, Avery reviews.
Avery's usually pretty good.
What, put out?
I think it's more reasonable.
Who did the other?
PMP associate.
They just got bought out.
That's who we've got.
This is who he's for all our series.
Who's it?
Brian Murphy, ever Farland daddy, you better be sure.
No wonder they're not getting mine done at times.
Danubio Engineering Noel.